Good evening. The September 7, 2022, meeting of the West Springfield Planning Board is hereby called to order at 6:00 PM. In accordance with MGL Chapter 30A, I must announce that anyone intending to tape the meeting must identify themselves through the clerk and write his or her name and address for the record. And we inform those present that any document that is to be considered or discussed must be made part of the record of the meeting and the original or copy must be submitted to the committee before there will be any discussion regarding the document. Documents include photos, plans, drawings, computer printouts and simulation, video presentations and the like, as well as letters and written material. Okay, 6:00 PM. DISH Wireless. Amendment to the site plan approval originally granted on November 3, 2021 for the addition of three external antennas and necessary equipment at the existing wireless communication tower located at 1201 R. Westfield Street in the Business A zoning district. Got the floor?
Good evening. Thank you very much for having me. My name is Michael Dolan. I am an attorney from the law firm of Brown Rudnick. Here on behalf of the applicant, American Tower Corporation, in its capacity as the owner of the tower telecommunications tower and equipment compound at 1201 Westfield Street and as agent for DISH Wireless. So DISH is proposing to attach three wireless communications antennas at the 87-foot centerline height on the existing 160-foot telecommunications pole at the site and install related equipment as shown in the plans. By way of background, the board considered on November 3, this application, the original site plan approval application for the same installation we're here for tonight. At the last minute, the American Tower representative came down with COVID and could not attend the meeting. And so thus, no one was able to attend on behalf of my client. The board went ahead and considered the application that evening, but unfortunately, there was no one present on behalf of the applicant to answer any questions, give some background about the current situation at the site, address open issues, or to address possible conditions of approval. The board granted site plan approval that night, subject to several conditions. Since that date, my client has gone out to the site and attempted to take steps to improve the appearance of the site, including doing some painting of the tower and cables, cleaning up some debris in and around the equipment compound and removing some dead vegetation that it was able to remove that is in its area around the equipment compound. As a reminder, American Tower, its property interest at the site is pursuant to an easement, and my client only controls the equipment, the compound area and a very small buffer around it. In short, it does not control the balance of the property and has no leverage or recourse against the property owner with respect to the condition of the rest of the property. My client is here tonight making an application under federal law for for review of ineligible facilities requests to make modifications to an existing telecommunications monopole. We're also here tonight seeking a modification to the existing site plan condition approvals at the telecom site regarding landscaping and fencing. As set forth in our application, DISH's proposed installation does not substantially change the dimensions of the monopole and collectively constitutes a minor modification, which, under the Federal Spectrum Act, requires that it be approved. DISH is also seeking an amendment to condition number four of the November 2021 DISH Site Plan Conditional Approval. Specifically, that condition provided that a 10-foot solid vinyl fence shall be installed around the pole and all associated equipment. American Tower and DISH respectfully request that the fence requirement be reduced to a height of eight feet of a solid vinyl fence. We've done the pricing. A 10-foot fence is not a standard-sized fence. I didn't know that. They weren't aware of that. And that would require a special custom order that would result in $100,000 cost. We have priced out the 8-foot-high solid vinyl fence. That's $38,000. My client is willing to do that, but as I alluded to, the $100,000 cost is unreasonably cost prohibitive. Right now, as you may know, there's a 6-foot-high chain-link slat fence. And this 8-foot fence will make a significant improvement to the site. And the fact that it will be the solid vinyl that you all had requested, we think will go a long way to completely block the interior items and equipment that are at that height. American Tower is also requesting an amendment to the conditions in the prior site approvals for landscaping. With respect to the landscaping condition, over the years, American Tower has been unsuccessful in maintaining the landscaping set forth in the original condition for this facility, despite several replantings. Unfortunately, the plantings have not, they've been extremely difficult to keep alive due to due to a combination of poor soil conditions, lack of consistent adequate sunlight, proximity to pavement and other man-made improvements, as well as some wild growth that is outside of the area we control, that impinges the ability for the area around the compound to have thriving evergreen. You know, as a reminder, the original condition was for a 6-foot vegetation buffer of maybe a dozen evergreens around the equipment compound. And those were required to be six feet in height. We're proposing the 8-foot fence that would be solid vinyl, and clearly, that installation would be much more effective than any planting could possibly be. Obviously, it's fully opaque when it's a solid vinyl fence. So those are the items we are requesting relief for tonight. I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have. I apologize again that my client wasn't able to attend the meeting on November 21, and I'm glad to be here tonight to answer any questions you may have.
So is the client here tonight?
I'm here on behalf of my client, and they have dialed in.
So they can answer questions?
They are here. They cannot participate remotely, but they-
So I guess what's the difference from last time? Last time he had COVID, and he couldn't show up, and that's your reasoning for some of the inconsistencies or not not knowing this or that? So what's the difference tonight? Why ain't he here tonight?
There's a representative of the applicant here tonight. Quite frankly, it's very rare for an application to be considered and voted on with no one present on behalf of the applicant.
But you were here last time, right?
I was not here.
Oh, who was here last-
Nobody was here.
Okay. Second thing I got. As far as the landscaping and that whole explanation of the pavement and the sunlight. Come on. The guy next door's got a whole paved parking lot, and his landscaping looks beautiful, so.
Yeah, I was just there.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you, the fact of the matter is, no one goes over there and does their job. Okay, you got a, you got a company that's supposed to take care of it. We just mysteriously got their phone number today, which we've been asking for, for a year now, since the last hearing, and they were supposed to get us that from the original. Okay, so it has nothing to do with the poor soil. It has nothing to do with the pavement next door. It's, they're not doing their job. Okay, if you hire someone to maintain your lawn at home and it looked like that, you wouldn't be happy. So if you've got a company that's supposed to be maintaining it, I would suggest that's the problem. Not the poor soil, not the pavement from the neighbor, not the shade from the tree, or maybe it's the shade from your pole. So that's my two cents on the landscaping. And as far as your 6-foot evergreens, that's the minimum when you planted them. The intent was for them to grow. Okay, so 6-foot on an evergreen is because that's the minimum that we require when you put it in. They can go 10, 20 feet high. So as far as the 6-foot evergreen and the 6-foot fence versus the 8-foot fence, not relevant. The idea of the 6-foot evergreen was so that they would grow and be much higher than eight feet. I went by there multiple times. I went by there again this evening. You're right, it is a 6-foot fence. 8-foot is, I guess you could call it substantially, it's two feet higher. Not gonna cover everything that. It's not gonna cover all the ground equipment. It'd definitely make a difference. Be up for discussion. But those are my thoughts on most of your comments so far. I, I guess my only question until we move on is, how are we gonna be assured that since they haven't done their job for the last several years, that they're gonna start to maintain it now? Because if you go over there now, it's, the vines are growing all up again. They haven't been there in, I couldn't tell you how long. You know, they went the last time, which was almost a year ago, right? What are we, 10 months ago? So they probably went right after that and cleaned it up.
So they were there a month ago. And, you know, they did pull out dead vegetation around the compound. I just wanna add that these evergreens that we're, that were originally proposed, there's trees hanging over the compound. I think if you were there today, you would've saw them hanging over the evergreens that would impede any growth there and challenge that. I've done landscaping myself in the past. I, I know the challenges there. Yes, if someone was out there daily monitoring this, that, and the other, you could, you know, a country club staff could perhaps get these things looking good and maybe keep them in some survival mode. But quite frankly, the area outside the compound, which we don't control, is wild growth. And that is coming over, and I think if you saw that, I saw it went over there today. There's, there it is again. There's three kids on a trampoline over there, and they've had a pool. They've got all sorts of debris out there. We can't control that. Our compound is clean now. We're gonna, we have a condition. We have to keep it painted white with the cables. And if we put in this 8-foot fence, we think it will look very good, and I agree that there was a time there where it did not, but we're dedicated to changing that. I've got, and I apologize for the contact info just arriving today. I didn't realize that was something that we had to do. I, I knew it was a condition of approval for us to get a building permit. And then Allison had asked me today if I had that. I asked my client, immediately got her to her. She asked me if we had the removal bond evidence, if that was still in place. I got her that, so. I apologize. That's something that we knew was a condition of a building permit, but we had other things to take care of before we could do that, and that's what we're trying to attend to.
Before I get to you, Allison, anything from the town or your department?
So the Health Department had commented that they've been to the property, the property at large, and they have been in contact with the homeowner in the front about that issue. Clearly, not much progress has been made, but they're, it's on their radar. And they also had some email contacts that they have for American Tower that I can add to the information we got today. The only thing is that I, I do think, like, a call center is maybe not the best avenue for the town to be reaching out for maintenance issues. And I'd rather something a bit more direct i-if possible.
I mean, I, I guess I missed that.
Yeah, same. Would you mind clarifying?
So, and the attorney can probably help too. The, the contact information that was sent for property maintenance is a, is a, their operations center in, I don't know what state, so it's, it's not a local company.
Yeah, there's a network operations center that has a 24-hour phone number for emergencies and maintenance issues. And if, if you want us to provide another number, we could, you know, that, that's typically how those calls are funneled, Allison, so. But, you know, we're glad to, if there's another contact source you want us to do in addition to that, so you feel like there's two numbers, we'd, we'd be glad to do that. And I, I do wanna reiterate, I, you know, in, in many situations, it's the case where when you are the owner of the tower, you are there pursuant to a lease. And then you are paying rent to a landlord, and you have some leverage to say, hey, listen, you gotta clean up everything else you're doing, cuz it's, it's hurting us. But in this case, all we have is an easement right. We don't pay that owner anything. And we don't even know, we, we've never had any contact with the owner. It's a completely separate relationship. So as much as in some cases, as I say, we can kinda lean on the property, and we have no ability in this case to do that. So within our controlled area, which is that equipment compound and a slight buffer around it, as I say, we, you know, we're gonna make the tower look better. We're gonna put in a, a much better fence. And, you know, we've tried to give the information so that if this does happen again. As I say, you know, the debris around the compound, we can control that up into the, you know, several feet around it, and that has been done. Even within the last month, I went out today, and I called my client when I got there. I said, there's some stuff that's grown up. And, you know, in this intense heat, I guess some things did grow up, but someone was there one month ago. So it is definitely on my client's radar. I understand the board's concerns. And, you know, despite other parts of the property maybe being a challenge and an eyesore, we're not gonna let that happen with our property, and I would encourage the town, to the extent you ever feel like we're not complying with any of the conditions, to call those numbers, or call me even if you want. Just, someone will respond to your inquiry i-if there's a challenge like that.
So is, is the maintenance done by DISH or American Tower, or is it you call up a local landscaper and send them up?
They, they contract out the work, American Tower. So DISH will just be a sub kinda tenant in there, and they have a right to go on the tower and put some equipment in the compound. American Tower owns the tower and the land in that compound, so they're the ones required to maintain it. That's why you don't need to call DISH. We're the ones stop on that.
Anything else, Allison?
And this is just for some clarification, please. The way I'm reading this is that the property owner is Verizon Wireless. Is that my understanding? Let me just go on. That the tower owner, which I'm gonna assume is, is a renter to the property owner, is American Tower, and that now your company, DISH Wireless, is renting from American Tower? Is that how this works?
So my client does not own the property. They have an easement at the property, and I believe his name is Mahmoud Assad, I think is the name. He owns the house in the front and the land. We don't own any, we have an easement. And then, you're correct, DISH pays us money to go on our tower, which we have the right to have there pursuant to the easement.
Let me interrupt for a minute. You just said the, the same guy owns the house up front that owns the property the tower's on?
It's our understanding he may in fact own that.
So the property, you can explain this probably better than I can. Property rights are like a bundle, and there's ownership and rights to the fee simple, which is like the, the ground effectively. But then there's rights to use it as well, which is where the easement comes into play. And I, I had looked into this previously. It's a, it's, I, I think it's like a leasehold. It's, they paid upfront for 100 years to be able to use this property to a previous property owner. It was not the person that owns and lives there now. So when they sold that property to him, that transaction had already occurred, and the value of the property presumably was based upon that being out of the, out of the scope of the sale.
That's right, and that was Green Mountain owned the property. And then, it's my understanding, they have since conveyed that to the owner of the prop, of the house for nominal consideration.
Go ahead. Bev, you still got more?
What becomes confusing is, I'm not sure why you are responsible to maintain the property if you're a leaser on the pole. I, I guess this is what I'm, I'm getting at now. Like, why is the property owner, who I'm looking at in the site information that's been provided to us, is Verizon Wireless?
Yeah, that's not correct. So the, the, we have to maintain the property, which is the easement area that we control. We've been given an easement right to use a little square, 7,500 or so square feet to put our compound, and we have done that, and now we maintain everything within it.
So you're saying the information on his plan is incorrect?
As far as-
Like she said, site information, property owner, Verizon Wireless. Address, property tax, Atlanta, Georgia, 31139.
The, the ownership reference there is because of, that's a predecessor, and if you look at the title records online, Verizon does not own the property. That's what the town has down in the assessor's office. So they just go with whatever the assessor has.
Allison, who pays the taxes on the property?
It's actually split, as far as I can tell, but it's, there's property tax and there's personal property tax, and the pole is personal property tax. And I don't know if they're being taxed just on the personal property or the land property as well, but it's, there, there is a separate bill that goes to Verizon Wireless or, or doing business ask.
That bill says Verizon care of American Tower, because they're out of the picture now.
Well, we're not gonna change or fix any of that. I guess we oughta just look at the changes he's looking or requesting, which, man, I find that absolutely amazing to go from 38 to 100 grand. And, and we, you know, I think we came up with that 10 feet based on looking at the equipment, you know, eight feet's gonna definitely be better, but you're still gonna see all that ground equipment, so. I'm sorry. I don't know who was first. Go ahead.
I just have a quick question. My concern is, we made these amendments in November. So I understand December, January, February, March, no one could go out, probably not April. But May, June, July, people could've gone out there to pick it up, but you said they went last month. And that's telling me that they only went out last month because they knew you were coming here today. So I guess my question is, why wasn't it maintained before this? Why wasn't, why wasn't someone out there in April or May to clean up what needed to be done, knowing that that was our request?
So by cleanup, do you mean the physical ground with removing dead vegetation and the like? Yeah, so that, I know most of that happened a month ago, whether that was some, or two months, it was a month ago. But whether that, whether there was additional things that were done two or three months before that, I don't know. But definitely, the, I've gotten involved in this, and the whole focus has been, what can we do to address the concerns of the board and address the conditions? And I'm the one who said, you gotta get doing all this stuff, because they were trying to figure out with DISH who was gonna do it. And at the end of the day, I said, well, someone's gotta do it, so American Tower, you do it. And that's why now American Tower is laser-focused in on this.
Jay? I mean, if the numbers are, you know, the fence, that is outrageous to go to a 10-foot fence. Obviously, I'm not gonna go solicit bids myself on that, but 8-foot, I think is an improvement, and I think it would probably look good. I'm more concerned with the property itself. I mean, it, it's looked dumpy for a very long time. And that's the concern. I mean, you approve it, and it looks great, and then it just doesn't, and then you don't get return phone calls, and there's nobody to contact, and we can't even like, it, it's hard to make sense of who owns what and maintains what. That's dizzying. I mean, that's just like-
I mean, you understand that, I mean, i-if they put the fence up around it, they got three feet around the fence on the outside. That's all they can clean. They can't go clean up the other guy's backyard.
And I understand that, yeah. I, I think, I think going, I think, right. I think going to a vinyl fence is gonna improve some of that. If I remember, I mean, I'm going off memory, and it's been a while since I've, I've looked at it, but I wanted to say I saw stuff growing up the fence and stuff like that. You're gonna see a lot less of that with the vinyl fence than you would a chain-link fence.
Well, I gue- I guess that's my problem. You know, we, we, we sourced somebody locally to maintain it. I'm going with Sue, man. You sourced somebody locally, maybe a couple months after the first hearing, and then a month ago. I mean, there was definitely somebody there way back around the first hearing. Cuz I went there a couple times. Sorry, but I think Sue worked near there. I met her there one morning. They did a little something, and then like she said, all of a sudden, hey, let's get it going, and they go back a month ago. So I, I don't know if this is even feasible, but to me, you know, if you guys presented a, a yearly contract with a local landscaper, and he's gotta go there once every two months. I mean, like you said, you did landscaping. 15 minutes with some vegetation killer around the outside of the hopefully 8-foot stockade fence, ain't nothing growing. I, I, you know, I don't know if we can require that, but maybe if we had a written contract from a local guy that he's supposed to be there every couple of months to do that. Now we got a phone number of Joe's Landscaping that we don't have to call a call center and maybe get somebody out in East Oshkosh somewhere to call us back. We got a local landscaper that, hey, you're supposed to be taking care of this, and it's a pretty mess. It's a mess over there. I mean, that'd be, you know, if you said to me, yeah, we can do that, and we'll do the 8-foot fence, me personally, I'd probably be okay with everything. I just, our issue is, it's not gonna get taken care of. It really isn't. I mean, we all know it. I mean, it's, it's just, it's tough.
Right, so I agree with you. If we put in an 8-foot fence and there's vegetation growing all around it in our area, that can't happen. So we need to take care of that. You know, we, we don't produce trash, so if I saw stuff out there, there's cans and stuff, I mean, we don't do that. So the only thing that we would contribute that would not look good would be if we didn't take care of vegetation right outside that fence, and we would agree to do that.
I, if, if you're going over there to take care of vegetation and trash blew over, cuz-
Well, well, yeah, I mean-
Then you're gonna rake it up and clean it up. It's your property.
Yes, if it's in our 3-foot area, but I'm saying, like, I went there today. There's pool toys and everything 10 feet away from our area. You know, that's trespassing if we go do that too, so.
Listen, we're not. It, it's, it's really pretty basic. You know what? If it's approved, an 8-foot stockade fence, some vegetation cleaner around, a killer around the 8-foot fence every couple of months, and if there's a garbage bag that blew up against your fence, pick it up.
And we will do all of that.
It's really simple.
We will do all of that.
Could we request a contract from a-
The only thing I will say is, and could we use our contractor, because we have one who does a regional, they have a big project. They do all the sites, but will, that, this site will be, yes, okay, great.
I don't care if you hire a guy from California, as long as they're there every two months, and we have proof that you hired them, and we got their number, so we can call California and say, hey dude, you were supposed to be here a month ago, and the place is a pigsty.
Deal, deal.
Not a deal yet, but that's, that's, that would be-
colloquial.
That would be okay with me. If we had something in writing, that someone's supposed to be there every two months, their direct phone number, and possibly, if everybody okay's with it, an 8-foot fence. I'm okay with those things. Is that all that was changed, Allison, before I shoot my mouth off more than I should, as usual?
Yeah, I, so I mean, there was conversation about the, changing the original approval, which had the Arborvitae. I think that was kind of already agreed upon at the last meeting, because they're just, they're a hopeless cause at this point.
It is, it is.
So as far as I understand, the height of the fence is changing, and I, I don't know if you wanna add another level of specificity to the first condition about the contact information.
Yeah, I would, I would somehow put, we want, we want a copy of, of the contract that someone's going there every two months, or three, whatever it is, and, and their direct number. If it's Jay's Landscaping, then we wanna call Jay and say, hey, what's the deal? hey, what's the deal, and they're gonna say whatever they're gonna say. Anybody else?
Yeah, I, I was thinking the same, the same thing. It'd be nice to know who, who to contact, who's actually getting to be responsible for dispatching or doing the work directly. The problem is if they're, you know, this is before, before the, the comment about the regional service company, which might actually make this easier, but I was concerned that, you know, it goes to bid, and it's X, Y, Z landscaping, and next year it's somebody else. Nobody's gonna call us and tell us that. So we're gonna have this old number, and they're gonna say, yeah, we don't do that, that was last year, and then we're back to chasing endless phone numbers where nobody calls back. And I don't know if that's the case, so I'm not saying that personally, but it, my concern is just, how, how, how do you police that, right? Because it's not gonna be a problem until we need to talk to somebody and we realize we can't reach them. Uh, if it's regional, that, I don't, maybe you could elaborate on that, maybe that helps that, if it's not something that changes, if it's a.
Yeah, so, for instance, the, the work that was done out there, I was told by my client that they have a contracted, you know, the group they've contracted with to do maintenance landscaping type things like that, does more than just this site, so they'd be all in a larger swath of the Commonwealth. So, uh, obviously you can imagine the pricing benefits to doing it that way, but, uh, you know, just like with a removal bond, where we have to give contact information, we're gonna have an obligation to maintain it. Even if we had a local person here, they could change every year too. Their pricing could go through the roof, or they go out of business, or what have you. So it is a moving target, but, you know, we, if that's a condition of our approval, we have to live by that.
So they gotta, they gotta supply, and if it, if the, if the contract changes, or they do a new one every year, then we get a copy of it.
Suppose it's overlooked, what are we doing? What, what do you do? So the, the?
Well, my, could, could I, could I just comment on that?
Please.
To the extent you saw that the perimeter around that fence did not look like it was being maintained, you have, the, the board has the American Tower contact information, and you call and you say, hey, listen, who's doing your work? You have an obligation under, I'm hoping it would never come to that, that we would've done what we were supposed to do, but that would be the recourse that we will have a, and I said that number's twenty-four-seven. Um, and, you know, it's for emergencies and maintenance, so they would have that information as well, but as I say, I hope it would never come to that.
Agreed, yeah.
I would be more satisfied with not the call center, but the contractor's information and the person who's in charge of contracting with that contractor. Does that make sense? Because I think what Jay was saying is, great, they contracted someone. Next year, the guy says, stop calling me, I don't have the contract anymore, and we're calling a call center that never gets back to us.
Okay.
And so I think the, if we had a number for the office of who's in charge of contracting, uh, we could, we could more quickly find out who, who that person was. The other thing too is, I guess, it seems like an incredibly high number for a ten-foot fence. Did you, I mean, who did you seek out the quote from, and did you include the quote in this at all? I didn't see it.
I didn't believe it myself. And apparently, I don't know a lot about fences, but ten-foot fence is totally an irregular size, has to be special ordered, and with, I assume, presume perhaps supply chain, uh, challenges right now, what have you, the quotes my client got were close to a hundred thousand dollars. And that's why they're paying me to come here to do this, because it was so exorbitant that, uh, they said, we can't live with this, that we won't be able to dish up their, you know, the whole waterfall of issues from that.
And I, I'm not, you know, not.
Yeah, go ahead. I did call.
Okay.
I, 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 I didn't get an estimate for a specific job. I know quite a bit about fence, and my relatives own a good fence, big fence company, and, and they almost, they were like, are you out of your mind? Ten-foot fence, so.
Yeah.
I, I.
Bizarre enough.
A hundred thousand dollars, I would have to say is a little bit of an exaggeration, but I can see it being fifty to seventy percent more than, than an eight-foot fence.
I can too. You don't see ten-foot vinyl fences.
They're not allowed in most communities.
That's the thing too, most zoning ordinances only allow them up to eight feet, so that's why it is a special order. But to your point, you know, I didn't do the pricing, that's what my client told me, and that's, they were adamant, I, cause I even challenged that myself.
Yeah, I made a few calls. It's, it's legit. I don't, again, I don't know about the hundred grand, but it is definitely a huge.
That's a big piece of money, right?
It's a huge increase. It, it's just, they end up, you know, just, they end up going with larger poles, because it's a bigger fence, they gotta go deeper in the ground because of the wind, blah, 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 so it, it, it is definitely a, a, a bigger cost. So, I, again, I'm good with the eight, if we do the other stuff the way Ryan said there, I'm, I'm good with that. Bev?
Yeah, um, I guess this is more for, for us and, uh, as a committee and to Allison, because this isn't the first time a maintenance issue has come in front of us. And so I guess I'm curious to know who in town is, because we, we have to make decisions on this all the time. So who's in, who in town is responsible, um, to enforce the conditions that we're putting in front of this applicant? I mean, I'd like to know, like, who goes out and makes sure that you may be doing everything you're supposed to do, and that's great, but in front of that, now you have all this overgrown debris, and debris. So who takes care of that? Who enforces that?
So the zoning enforcement officer is the building commissioner, but the health department has, uh, a health code inspector and, uh, enforcement officer as well. So there's some things that fall more onto the health code side of things, and some things that are zoning specific or condition specific. The challenge becomes when, the leverage. When there's a building permit that's being held up, we have leverage. When there's not, it's, it becomes more of a back and forth.
And, and you, you kinda asked two things there. One, enforcing the conditions versus enforcing the dirty yard in front of it. Completely two different things, but.
I say this because we, we ask the app, a lot of the applicant, and you're more than willing to comply with all of that. And so now, you know, you'll comply, but the people in front of you may not, and then who do we go back at? You?
Yeah, I mean, if they make a mess.
Committee, do we, like, we need to know that?
We have to clean it up.
Right, so. So.
But I don't know, if there's health code violations, I assume there's enforcement actions that can be taken.
Yeah, and they, so like I said, they have been on the property, it was over the summer. They went twice, I think. And there's photos, and it's, it's in the works, but again, if there's nothing to leverage, it's really challenging to get them.
Cut the power.
Which we don't control.
Yeah, I don't want that to happen anyway.
So it's, uh, it's, it's, it's a completely different animal with, uh, situations like that. And also, um, just people have limited means sometimes to, to do things, so it's not, it's not a simple problem or simple solution.
Yeah, when you get down to a residential situation, it's a little bit tougher than commercial. All right, enough of the, anybody else got anything? Anybody, anybody in the audience, anything to say? No? Just smile, nothing?
Motion to close the public hearing?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, closed. So my, my estimate, my, I mean, my understanding is, we're gonna keep all the previous conditions, change the number four to an eight-foot fence, and you're gonna add a little bit more detail to number one, meaning, you know, you got it?
Well, maybe, so I'd like to talk about it.
Yep.
So I'm thinking we could, it's.
I like the way Ryan worded it.
I, I did too, and I didn't write as fast as he spoke, so I sort of. I wrote, yep. If, if, so I wrote, and shall be kept current at the end, but I don't know that that's enough, uh, so that's.
Responsible for the regular maintenance of the property, and the name and contact information for the individual responsible for contracting with that con- uh, property.
Or sourcing out that contractor.
Sourcing out, I don't know how to word that better.
Right.
The, name and individual, how about the agent of the applicant responsible for?
Hiring that contractor.
Yeah, hiring the aforementioned contractor.
Sound all right?
That sounds very reasonable. Plus the aforementioned, sounds great.
Here to four.
Yeah, typical, typical attorney, you know?
Us tech guys don't talk like that.
Give me a hammer.
All right, um. Help me out, right? So, um, health department, the agent responsible for, and we're gonna then jump over, responsible for the regular maintenance of the property, and shall be met. Uh, wh- where'd you go from there?
I don't know if you want my help. I just tack on to the end of what's already there, and the name and contact info for the agent responsible for contracting.
There's no way I could write that fast. There's just no way. Do you wanna just, do you wanna just, yeah, exactly.
Yeah, I can, I can do it.
Please, yes, yes.
Well, we have it, yeah, you've gotta make the motion now.
All right. I move to approve the site plan for the addition of the three wireless communication antennas and three antenna mounts with associated ground equipment at the existing wireless tower located at twelve oh one Westfield Street in the business A zoning district, subject to the following conditions. One, prior to the issuance of a building or electrical permit, the applicant or property owner shall provide the planning department, building department, and health department, the name and contact information for the individual or company that is responsible for the regular maintenance of the property, and the agent of the applicant responsible for hiring the aforementioned contractor. Two, prior to the issuance of a building or electrical permit, all overgrowth, dead vegetation, and trash shall be removed from the property. Three, prior to the issuance of a building or electrical permit, the existing pole and attachments shall be cleaned and stripped of any peeling paint and repainted white. Four, an eight-foot solid vinyl fence shall be installed around the pole and all associated equipment. A fence permit shall be obtained prior to the installation. Five, all improvements to the facility and its components shall be camouflaged as per zoning ordinance section three hundred dash one-one dash point six design standards, section three hundred dash one-one point four, district overlay regulations, and section one-one point three definitions. Six, all exterior lighting shall be designed, installed, shielded, and maintained to prohibit viewing of the lighting element from and the trespass of nuisance glare on abutting properties and streets. Seven, the lot shall not be developed, degraded, or altered in any manner that will increase surface water drainage to abutting streets or properties. Eight, all site improvements shall be installed and maintained in accordance with the approved plans and conditions associated with this approval. Any deviations from the approved plans and conditions shall require prior written approval by the planning board.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, approved.
Thank you all very much for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hopefully we don't have to see you again, unless you've got something new coming.
Agreed, thank you.
Have a good night.
You too.
All right, approval not required.
So we have two approval not required plans before you tonight. The first is two oh one East Gooseberry. Uh, they are just dividing up some existing land, vacant land, um, and all of the lots being created have frontage on existing ways.
Move to endorse the plan and find that it does not constitute a subdivision, because every lot shown on the plan has frontage of at least seventy-five feet as required in the residence A two zoning district.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, approved.
I wrote over Franks.
What do you got, Allison?
So this is Waterville Lane, uh, which is off of Charles Ave, and, um, this plan is dividing up an existing lot that has two homes that predate the subdivision control act in West Springfield, um, which enables them to create the division without requiring it to go through subdivision control.
I have no clue what this is.
Me neither, just saying that.
Charles Ave comes off of Westfield Street by the railroad bridge.
Oh, this, all the way down.
This, the river is right here, yeah.
Move to endorse the plan and find that it does not constitute a subdivision in accordance with the Massachusetts general law, chapter forty-one, section eighty-one L, more specifically because two buildings were standing on the land prior to May twenty-third, nineteen fifty-five. The date when the subdivision control law went into effect in the town, in the town of West Springfield, and one such building remains standing on each of the lots.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, approved.
No.
Frank, your microphone.
All right, uh, new old business?
No.
Nothing? Huh?
Just minutes.
Did I go right by that? Minutes?
Move to approve the minutes of August first, uh.
Third.
Third. Word is prepared.
Second.
Was I there? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained, approved. Gotta apologize, I'm looking at you, thought you were a, with, with them, I didn't realize you were our alternate. Welcome.
Welcome.
Alexander. I did the same thing to Sue when she started, I whispered to her, who's that lady out in the audience, you know? But, welcome.
He's always afraid he's in trouble. He doesn't wanna bring it up.
We're all set, right?
Motion to adjourn?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night, West Springfield.